Hammond County Council for Monday, June 8, 2020 to order. Start with the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The invocation, Janet?
Yes. Dear God, thank you for the many blessings we enjoy. We pray for those suffering with health issues and ask that you heal them. Please guide the scientists working diligently to find a vaccine for the horrible virus infecting the world. Bless the efforts of our healthcare workers and first responders providing aid to those in need. Comfort those enduring financial challenges. We have been taught to be one people, brothers and sisters to each other. Forgive us for our failure to respect one another. We ask for your help to overcome prejudice and guide us to love one another unconditionally. Please touch our leaders with wisdom to guide us through our challenges with truth and equity in your holy name. Amen.
Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander. Here. Spitali.
Yeah.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Yeah.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show nine present, zero absent. At this moment, before we get to item number three on the agenda, Marty Wilgus from the Sanitary District would like to address the council in the public.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to come to the council meeting today on Zoom. It's been almost three weeks since the rainstorm, the heavy rainstorm that we had that caused a lot of basement backups. And I, I thought it was about time that I give a report to the council so all of you had a good idea of where we stand and what we're doing as of today. The closing date ended this past Friday for anybody to make a claim and inspection. As of yesterday, we have seventeen hundred verified citizens that had some type of backup in their home. So we have seventeen hundred inspections that we have done. And I just want to say that right now, the next process is that we are calling each and every one of those residents and they come in to fill out additional documentation. There could be some HUD money and grant money that we may be eligible through for CDBG. We want to take advantage of that if that is possible. So that's the reason why we are having the folks come in to get some further documentation. It's also to verify that they're actually the homeowner and that the program did not cover tenants or landlords. So that's the other reason for the paper verification. I can tell you, we started issuing checks last week. Unfortunately, there was only about a hundred that went out. So what I have done is I brought in more of my staff to help Awana and her department be able to do the interviews and to move the process along even more quickly. But it's going to take some time, obviously with that many claimants. It's not going to happen overnight, but we are working diligently to get that done as quickly as possible because I know these folks already had their inspections and they can surely use five hundred dollars. Lastly, I just want to say that, you know, I can't say enough about my staff. I can't say enough about Jack's Sewer Department. They worked diligently and you have to remember, these are small, this is a small department along with helping, getting help from some of the code department from city to be able to increase the manpower for the inspections. That got done quickly and with the, with the work of the mayor and the mayor's staff, we were able to add more bodies on to be able to do the inspections as quickly as possible. So I just want to thank not only the mayor and the city and, and the inspections department that helped us out, but specifically my staff, they're working thirteen, fourteen hour days through the holiday, by the way, because of the fact that we knew we had a small window to be able to get these inspections done. So they all did a great job. Sanitary District is doing everything it can to move the process along. And I just wanted the city council to know and at least have an update from me as far as where we are with everything. So I'll open it up to questions if, if anyone has any questions for me.
Marty, I have a quick question, if you would.
Sure.
I've been asked, in fact, I had someone that I visited on the night of the flood install one of them backflow preventers. And can you run us through the process real quick about the program there?
So the backflow preventer is something that we do offer up to a thousand dollars reimbursement. It's actually like a flapper valve that goes on your lateral line that goes out to the street that connects to our sewer in the street or alley, depending on, on where you live. So what it does is that in, in a very heavy rainstorm like we experienced, and I just want to say, this rainstorm that we experienced is what the federal government calls a hundred and eighty year storm, meaning that it only will happen with all the statistics, once every hundred and eighty years. That's how intense this storm was. Unbelievable. But the flapper valve actually lets sewage and debris out of your home and then shuts if and so it starts to back up in your lateral line coming back to your home. So there's two ways to install it. It can either be installed outside in the lawn or the backyard, depending on where your lateral line hooks into our main, or in your basement in the floor. I highly recommend that anyone installing those, install it in your basement in the floor, only because of the fact that it needs regular yearly maintenance where you take the cover off, you clean it out to make sure the flapper valve doesn't have anything that would cause it to stay open or closed, either way. So how you qualify?
Price range of the total cost, Marty? The city will provide up a thousand dollars and so you have a price range of what people charge to do that?
It's usually depending on the structure of your home and a couple of things, it ranges from twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
Okay.
I, I had a resident that has actually went and had that put in already and it was right around three thousand dollars. And she was, she was questioning me on the process of getting that reimbursement there, that thousand dollar reimbursement was the question I had, Marty.
Yeah, so in order to get the reimbursement, you have to contact us. We have to verify that you actually had basement backup at one time or the other, which we keep all those records. Then that puts you on the list. I budget usually fifty thousand dollars a year for that program. Unfortunately, it usually is never utilized. I maybe do one a year if that. So we are well prepared and it's well funded. And what they need to do is they need to contact us, even though she's had it done already there, she can still contact us. We will get the verification as long as she had a licensed Hammond plumber do that and we can show that she did have basement backup somewhere within the last ten years or longer. She could qualify up to a thousand dollars. And I know Councilman Klinsky actually had it done at his house, I think, or yours.
Okay. Does anybody else?
Yes, Marty. I, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I wanted to compliment the Hammond Sanitary District through this whole situation. You guys were awesome the night of the event afterwards. You were, all of your people were very attentive to the residents and I got several calls complimenting, complimenting you. So I just wanted to pass that along to you. Thank you for the job you do.
Well, thank you. We do appreciate that. I was actually out there with my staff that night because I wanted to be able to personally talk to the residents about the devastation that they just experienced. And I wanted them to know, at that time, we didn't know what we were going to offer because it had just happened, but I wanted them to know that we weren't just shying away from what took place, that I wanted them to know that this was an act of God, it had nothing to do with someone not turning on a pump or something as silly as that. Everything was running. Every single station was running. We had no failures at all. We had three hundred million gallons of water coming through the plant. Three hundred million gallons. You can just imagine, we're rated for forty-eight million. So we had three hundred million coming into the plant. It stressed the plant, but our guys did well. They didn't panic and everything ran as best as it could. Nothing was down. So I'm very proud of my staff, the operators, the laborers, the sewer department. Jack Smith put in probably over three hundred hours in the last three weeks being out there with his guys, so they just weren't feeling that they're out there alone. And I want to thank the city too, because the city and code department actually helped us out too. And it was unprecedented that they gave me as much manpower as I needed.
Marty, I just wanted to thank your staff and especially Jack because that Sunday morning at six-thirty, I had called Jack and he took me and showed me the whole system and how it works and where it all goes. And he's made the offer to anybody on the council that would ever want to see it to go, that he'd be glad to take you around. And I mean, I saw on that Sunday morning, half of that department over there on Sherman Street. And you guys did an excellent job. Does anybody else have any further comments or questions?
You have a question, Marty. I know that you guys are still swamped and, and trying to catch up, but out of the seventeen hundred inspections, do you know how many people have received checks already? And I know you all said the process would take about two weeks, but it seems like maybe there's a little bit more of a delay just given the increasing in how many people have submitted for reimbursement. But can you touch on that?
Yeah, we, Councilman, we've issued so far a hundred checks. And I, I decided that that wasn't satisfactory to me because of the total number that we have that have to go through the process of the interview. And so I've actually added on over the last three days, more of my internal staff at the plant and then also utilizing more people from City Hall that are actually coming to the plant to be able to do the phone calls, set up the appointments and do the interviews. So planning and development is, is very, they're, Awana, I love Awana to death. She does a great job, but she has limited people and personnel. And for this type of number that we're dealing with, she just doesn't have enough help. So I sat down with her late last week and I said, Awana, we need, we, I just know because I've been through this before, you know, we need to do more. And what do you need me to do to help you? And she said, I need more, more bodies. So we did that. And so now we've added probably another six people to her staff that are doing calls all day long. And I've expanded the hours so that people can come pick up their checks until seven PM and I'm out there with my staff Monday through Friday so that Awana's people can go home and get the rest they need. And then we pick up passing out the checks and making it convenient for the residents for five to seven PM.
Hello, Marty, this is Mark. Can you hear me?
I can, Councilman, yes.
Do you have numbers on how, out of the seventeen hundred, how many were residents? How many might have been business or commercial?
The, so far, these were all residents. We did not do inspections on anything other than residents. The program that we designed is for residents only, not tenant occupied. And so that's what the verification process is and that's why we have to do the interviews because we actually have to have them, the resident, bring in documents showing whether they have a homestead or any other thing that we can verify that they are actually the owner of that home. And we then have the inspection report that we match to that. And then the check process, soon as that interview's done, the checks are usually done within a day.
And the, thank you, Marty. And the flooding event, the flooding event, was it in the third, fifth and sixth only or others or not all those?
Well, I can tell you, just to give you an idea, the first district, your district, Councilman, had less than an inch of rain as compared to the southern part of Hammond, specifically Hessville, we got three inches of rain within a half hour. It, it just was unbelievable. You couldn't even see outside. You couldn't even see your hand in front of you in that rainstorm. It was coming down unlike, I used to live in the Virgin Islands for three years and these are the type, they call these a tropical storm. These are the type of storms that they get there on a regular basis and that's why they're tropical, because it's in the tropical islands. These are not the type of storms that we've ever experienced, ever. And I can only tell you that we all have lived here a long time. Our winters have changed, they've become more mild. Our summers have become warmer and more tropical with rainstorms. And the rainstorms are kind of smaller, but heavier intensified in smaller parts of the city. So years ago, if I was in South Hammond and it was drizzling and I went up to North Hammond, all the way up to the lake, it was still drizzling. That's not the case anymore. These storms have changed dramatically. And so we understand that, we know at least what to try to do to help. And that's some of the things that, you know, with the federal government and our long-term control plan, our consent decree that I keep talking about, that the government wants to suspend three hundred million dollars in more improvements, some of the things that that will include will help, not going to cure these heavy tropical storms, but will help in the near future.
Thank you.
Marty?
Yes.
I had some people calling for that money just to be given out. Does that help out for people that lost their hot water heaters and things like that?
Actually, they can use the five hundred dollars any way they want.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Emerson, I heard Pete.
That's all right. Hello?
I can hear you.
There is.
Okay, I've been, I've been trying to get on. You know, while, when we were in the process of complimenting the various departments for their good work during the storm, I mean, while during the storm and after, after the storm, there's a gentleman that, that sent a letter, not a letter, email to the mayor's office. And I just want to read it real quickly here. It's a short email. And it says, "I was at home affected by the recent flood. Although I am very upset that this block always floods every time it rains, I'm sending this to give compliments to Dave Hein, who is a city inspector. I have lived in Hammond and Sherman for five years with my wife and two kids and we rent. Mr. Hein and I had a conversation today while he inspected my home so that my gas could be turned back on. After talking to him, he gave me information on buying a home in Hammond and contacted me with info with, with the city to assist me in buying a home here. I'm taking him up on it and I wanted you to know Mr. Hein is a pretty damn nice guy. My compliments to him." And I just want to send kudos to the inspector, he's from the code enforcement department, but my compliments to him for doing a good job. We obviously had a satisfied customer and he also provided additional information which might be helpful to Mr. Hein. So when everybody was talking about the good job, the city departments there, they, they did bustle their tails to give the service and Mr. Hein really appreciated it. So, and he, he's from Sherman Street, so that's why I wanted to put that in. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson, did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, just that, the fluctuation of the payment, you know, I, I had said to some people that called me that the city would give five hundred in some cases, like the gentleman called me back and said, he got three hundred. He was very appreciative of the three hundred. He had furnace and water heater and some damage from water coming up through his drain. But the, so Marty, there is a, there can be a fluctuation, so we just don't tell people it's automatically once you inspect five hundred dollars.
Well, it is five hundred dollars. We, we don't give anything less. As long as they meet the requirements, we give them a check for five hundred.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what he's talking about the three hundred because that, we don't do that. It's a, it's a full five hundred. No doubt.
All right. I don't know why he said that.
Yeah, maybe he meant five and just said three, I would think, but yeah, we don't discount it. It's a full five hundred dollars.
Okay.
I guess I should have checked my basement, but my wife went down there and hasn't said anything and I don't smell nothing, so I don't know if I got wrong.
Well, you know, the crazy thing is, you know, I built this home here in South Hammond probably about eighteen years ago. And of course, I have overhead sewers. And I was always told by Stan Stotting, the guy we all miss so much, that you will never have basement backup if you have overhead sewers. Well, guess what? I had basement backup and I was shocked, totally shocked. But it came through my overhead sewers. That was the intensity of the storm. I mean, it actually was so strong and, you know, I know there were wind, windbursts, there's no doubt about it. I mean, there was other damage other than from the water. But it came down so quick, so heavy that it even came into my house and I have overhead sewers. Unbelievable, unbelievable.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to that, I got water up through the, the stand pipe. I took it out momentarily just to see what was going on because I had a little seepage too. I've never gotten that in twenty-seven years in this house. And that was the first time I put it back in and just bailed out and put it in the laundry tubs.
Yeah, a lot of people, the stand pipe usually worked, but for this storm, it was coming out of the stand pipe for those folks that put stand pipes in their basement. That's how intense that it was.
Whoa.
It was one of the worst I ever seen and I've been in hundreds of storms and that one was bad.
It was.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Allison.
Marty, just as a reflection, not reflection, can you just remind the residents that, about the application process? Because I know there's been some things going around saying that things were based on income and things like that. If you can give clarification for residents with that and also dealing with the application itself.
Sure. So the, the reason we need to have the resident now come in after they've been verified, we will call them, but just as a reminder, we have seventeen hundred app, seventeen hundred verified basement backups. So the process is going to take longer than just a few weeks, but we will call them because we have their information. Basically, they come in, we tell, we call them, we tell them the information that they're going to need to bring with them and we set up an appointment. Now, everyone qualifies. The reason why we're doing the application for HUD is because that's where we may be able to recoup some money back based on income. So that's the only reason why we're doing the income verification is because of the fact that there is money out there through the federal government and it could be up to about two hundred thousand dollars. And so if you do the math, at five hundred dollars and seventeen hundred, we're close to a million. And the Sanitary District is fortunately in the spot where it can afford to do that. But if we were able to recoup two hundred thousand back, now it's only cost the district eight hundred thousand. And so, yeah, that's the reason that we're doing the income verification. But at the end of the day, anyone who had backup that we have on this list and they own their home will get five hundred dollars automatically.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Marty.
You're welcome.
Reading of the minutes, item number three, reading of the minutes.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
With the motion to accept the minutes from May twenty-six, twenty twenty and be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Spitali and I believe seconded by Councilman Emerson?
Yes.
To accept the minutes and have them placed on file, all those in favor, signified by saying, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have it. Item number four, approval of claims.
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
I think the motion approved claims for today's meeting, claims beginning dated six-one of twenty and ending with claims dated six-three twenty-twenty, excuse me. Claim number two-five-four-five through claim number two-six-four-eight inclusive, amount of one million ninety-two thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the claims as read by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander. Yes. Tally?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Item, trying to do this without my glasses, item number five, public hearings, there are none, but I will remind everybody, there is a public hearing on the twenty-second. And Councilman Spitali, you remember what ordinance number was on that one?
I don't have it with me, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Twenty-dash-zero-nine.
Thank you. And so, and we will, like we stated earlier, if you weren't present, there will be a meeting at the council chambers. It may not be entirely with everybody there, but there will be a meeting where we will be present and those that want to participate on Zoom will still can. And of course, all social distancing guidelines will be followed. Item number six, communications. Is that Councilman Klinsky? Is that you?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Does anybody have?
The video is breaking up, Dave. It's hard to follow. I, I don't know if it's at my end or if it's at your end, but I'm having a lot of difficulty with it freezing. Is that true for anybody else?
Does anybody else have any communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Item number seven, committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports? Are there any committee reports?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to let everybody know that the monthly Economic Development Commission meeting for June was canceled. And so the next one scheduled is on calendar for Monday, July third at nine AM.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Is there any other committee reports? Is Councilwoman Vines out there?
Yes.
Did you have any committee report on?
No, there unfortunately are no crime watch meetings as of yet. But I, I, I should say that we had a virtual crime watch meeting the end of May and it was well participated in. And I think that's something that we may be doing in the future in addition to our neighborhood meetings. So, you know, necessity is the mother of invention and, and I think we might be doing that. So thank you to everyone who participated, especially Mayor McDermott and Chief John Doty. Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number eight, ordinances, third and final reading, there are none. Item number nine, introduction of ordinances, there are none.
and I think we might be doing that. So thank you to everyone who participated, especially Mayor McDermott and Chief John Doty. Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Um, item number eight, ordinances, third and final reading, there are none. Item number nine, introduction of ordinances, there are none. Item number ten, resolutions, there are none. New and unfinished business.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Torres. Councilman Torres.
Yes, uh, is there anybody from the mayor's office there? I understand the mayor is on vacation.
Uh, I think that's where Marty.
Anybody other?
Let me look.
Okay, I, okay, I was looking for Phil or the chief of staff or anybody like that. Anyway, my point is on the money that was returned, I'm still not sure whether the money from twenty-nineteen was returned for our spending for district projects or not. Can anybody answer that?
Councilman Torres, I do know that I had some twenty-nineteen projects that got delayed to twenty-twenty, and the money was there from twenty-nineteen. And, uh, a PO was written on the twenty-nineteen money, so as far as what was in the park account, I know it was there.
Okay, what I'm talking about, I have, uh, five hundred thousand over five hundred thousand from twenty-nineteen that was unspent. And I would like to know, but I'll address the mayor's office. If, when can we start submitting projects to spend that money? I have urban park at the southern end. I have the streets on the southern end, there's about three streets that lead to it with about a quarter block that needs to be paved. Also, a south alley, which is the border of the urban park, needs to be paved. The park department, with the money allocated to them, ran out of money, so I was going to use some of that twenty-nineteen money to finish the southern end of that park. And I want to know when we are, can, can submit to get those projects started. But, uh, if there's nobody from the, from the mayor's office there, I guess I'll go a certain other way.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any new and unfinished business? Just, uh, as a reminder, I said it earlier, the meeting on the twenty-second, we plan on being in the council chambers for it, so the public's aware. Um, they are invited, uh, the restrictions stay in place on the limitations and the social distancing, but we will be back in the council chambers as well as maybe on Zoom, those that aren't comfortable yet. Uh, is there any other new and unfinished business?
Just, Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilman Torres.
Yes, yes. Uh, just want to let you know now include me in in the chambers. I don't like the Zoom stuff. So make some space, make some space for me in the council chamber.
That works for me too, because talking into my phone, I mean, and it's kind of weird having meetings like this, but we'll, we'll get back to regular order. Okay, is there anybody else that has any new and unfinished business?
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you, sir. As some of you know, I've been out of town most of May and all of June so far with some personal business. So I've missed a lot of the activity in Hammond. So I want to begin with just, uh, my condolences to Scott Rakos for the loss of a family member. I know how difficult that can be, and my prayers and and wishes go out to him and all his loved ones during this time. Secondly, uh, it appears like the ground beneath all of us is shifting these days. We've, so much has happened since March. We're in a ninety-day crisis related to COVID, health and medical. Also, an economic crisis from that. And most recently, a political, social justice policing crisis. So, we're in a boatload of turmoil, stress and crisis, which leads to a lot of pain right now, but crisis and pain also lead to movement and momentum and to change. I can speak to being in Washington DC for these days and on Saturday evening, attending a vigil for George Floyd on Sixteenth Street. And thousands of people lined the street as far as you can see in any direction for, uh, that Saturday evening vigil. People coming together of all uh, genders and races and spending time and genuflecting for the eight minutes and forty-six seconds uh, as bells rang across DC. It was a moving demonstration of unity by people in Washington DC. On Sunday, I attended a webinar that had to do with incremental steps to reimagining public safety. Several of the Minneapolis council persons were on that call before they took their vote that evening. And all kinds of case studies came across during the webinar related to reforming and transforming public safety. And there are even toolkits that municipalities can get through this group. And I was inspired by so much momentum, not only just the demonstrating, not only just the protesting, but also movement in systems to make systemic changes. Then on, then on Monday, Monday morning, Congress, the Congressional Black Caucus with its leaders penned a policy that the House of Representatives introduced just this very Monday morning. And it's the Justice in Policing, the Justice in Policing Act of twenty-twenty. And it bears a summary so that we know what kind of movement is occurring in the Capitol related to responding to the most recent events, uh, regarding policing and social justice. The Justice in Policing Act is the first ever bold, comprehensive approach to hold police accountable, to end racial profiling, to change the culture of law enforcement, and to empower our communities and build trust between law enforcement and our communities by addressing systemic racism and bias to help save lives. The Justice in Policing Act would, one, establish a national standard for the operation of police departments. Two, mandate data, data collection on police encounters. Three, reprogram existing funds to invest in transformative, community-based policing programs. And four, streamline federal law to prosecute excessive force and establish independent prosecutors for police investigations. The Justice Policing Act of twenty-twenty will work to end racial and religious profiling by prohibiting federal, state and local law enforcement from racial, religious and discriminatory profiling, and by main mandating training on racial, religious and discriminatory profiling for all law enforcement. And by requiring law enforcement to like, collect data on all investigatory activities. It's intended to save lives by banning chokeholds and no-knock warrants. By banning chokeholds and crowded holds at the federal level and conditions law enforcement funding for state and local government banning chokeholds. Bans no-knock warrants in drug cases at the federal level and conditions law enforcement funding for state and local government banning no-knock warrants at the local and state level. It will require that deadly force be used only as a last resort and requires officers to employ de-escalation techniques first. Changes the standard to evaluate whether law enforcement use of force was justified from whether the force was reasonable to whether the force was necessary. Condition grants on state and local law enforcement agencies establishing the same use of force standard. It's intended to limit military equipment on American streets and requires body cameras. It intends to limit the transfer of military-grade equipment to state and local law enforcement, and it will require federal uniformed police officers to wear body cameras and requires state and local law enforcement to use existing federal funds to ensure the use of policy, I'm sorry, of police body cameras. Will also require marked federal police vehicles to have dashboard cameras. Will also make it easier to prosecute offending officers by amending the federal criminal statute to prosecute police misconduct. The men's rear requirement in eighteen USC Section two-four-two will be amended from willfulness to a recklessness standard. And it will also enable an individuals to recover damages in civil court when law enforcement officers violate their constitutional rights by eliminating qualified immunity for law enforcement. Another section is investigating police misconduct. And it hopes to improve the use of pattern and practice investigations at the federal level by granting the, the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division subpoena power and creates a grant program for state attorneys generals to develop authority to conduct independent investigations into problematic police departments. The next section, empower our communities to reimagine public safety in an equitable and just way. This bill reinvests in our communities by supporting critical community-based programs to change the culture of law enforcement and empower our communities to reimagine public safety way. It establishes public safety innovation grants for community based organizations to create local commissions and task forces to help communities to reimagine and develop concrete, just and equitable public commissions with, it's similar to President Obama.
Did we, is it my phone or did we lose him?
I, I think, Mister President, that's actually, he's having problems, because I, I see all of you, I hear all of you. I think it's on his end.
Studies the impact of laws or rules that allow a law enforcement officer to delay answers to questions posed by investigators of law enforcement misconduct. It's meant to enhance funding for pattern and practice discrimination investigations and programs managed by the DOJ Community Relations Service. It will also require the attorney general to collect data on this investigatory actions and detentions by federal law enforcement agencies, racial distribution of drug charges, the use of deadly force by and against law enforcement officers, as well as traffic and pedestrian stops and detentions. It also is meant to establish a DOJ task force to coordinate investigation, prosecution and enforcement for the federal, state and local governments in cases related to law enforcement misconduct. The section is about transparency by collecting data on police misconduct and use of force. And lastly, to make lynching a federal crime and to make it a federal crime to conspire to violate existing federal hate crime laws. It's a two-page fact sheet on this bill that was introduced to the House of Representatives today, and I just bring it forward because it represents not just demonstration and protesting, but a response to that, a system, a systemic problem with a systematic approach to help with those problems. And I do want to say that our Hammond Police Department and how they maintain the peace and how they protect us. This is not a reflection on them, but just information that I think the public needs to have and the council needs to have, and I will share this paperwork, uh, with everybody and send it to Carmen as well to put into the minutes, so she won't have to type it. And, um, I, I think this just represents the best in all people, and the people who penned this were the chair is our bas, Senators Booker and Harris and Chair Nadler. These are the people to, that introduced the Justice in Policing Act of twenty-twenty that I, uh, briefly gave you. The bill actually is, uh, over a hundred pages long. Uh, thank you for taking the time to listen to this, and I will present the paperwork to the rest of the council at a future time. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Um, just to add to what he said, it's somebody that the day after I graduated high school, I had been walking up to people's door every day for a long period of time, and, uh, I have faith in what I actually saw in Hammond and the leadership of the police department, everybody from the police department, mayor to the council members that participated and I'm very proud to say that maybe this, something's going to be different, finally changed, rather than just sweeping in the rug when it's over with and acting like it never happened, then what I saw out of the city I live in is a community and leadership and department all come together and not let a bad situation get worse, and for all the council members and the mayor and the police officers, that officers that participated in it and defused what could have been a very, very bad situation. I'm proud to say that I'm proud of my community and I commit to who had it, who had a hand in it, and I thank you for it.
Mister President.
Uh, council, or I'm sorry, Marty. Councilman Marty.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, but, uh, now I want to speak as a private citizen of this city that I was born and raised in and.
So this is public expression now, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is there any, is there any further new and unfinished business? Hang on.
Yes, uh, Mister Chairman.
Councilman Torres.
I just would, uh, like to express my condolences to Councilman Rakos for the loss of his family, for the, excuse me, for the loss of his father and all of its family. And, uh, Bob Rakos was a colleague of mine in the police department. He was also a very dedicated police officer. And at times, a very funny man with a wry sense of humor, but I really appreciated the years, but, uh, we never worked together in any division, but I worked around him. But he was a dedicated police officer. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
My condolences, well, Councilman Rakos, um, is there any other, anybody else that wishes to speak on their new and unfinished business?
Mister President.
Councilman Emerson.
I too would like to express my, uh, sadness to Scott. I, I've been there with my own dad and, uh, uh, just, just, you know, you're in our, you're in our thoughts and prayers, Scott, and, uh, and prayers, Scott, and it's always tough, and I know that. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mark for attending, I'm sorry, Councilman Kowinski, for attending that meeting and sharing his information with us. In my opinion, we're at a sea-change moment in our country, and the majority of protests, even in our city, have been peaceful. And I think the other folks try to defocus when they talk about looting and all that other, and they never talk about the key situation that this has been going on too long. And I support anyone, and as a matter of fact, as we speak, there are peaceful protesting all around the country. And I just think we're at a sea-change moment, and I hope that we don't give lip service, as someone said, to this and that there's real change that's involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Is anybody else wish to speak? Councilwoman Alexander.
Our council members already might be listening to his family. But as we continue, we want to talk about the change, continue to strike with our city. And I'm proud to see that even though the candidate may not have had the prayer, while there so many of us were out in support. We continue to have, when we talk about these changes, I know that where we can, we need to get with our residents, with our police department, without making those necessary changes.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on their unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President. Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you, sir. One last item from me, and that is the Kesmer, the Pulaski Park in North Hammond has a monument on the corner dedicated to Kesmer Pulaski, who was the originator and designer of the American cavalry of Polish descent. And we have a monument on the southeast corner of the park. It was sprayed with graffiti last week with some wording that I won't mention here. And it was reported to the city, and I'm glad to say that today the city came out and cleaned it, but it did take five or six days for that to happen with some vulgarity on the monument up until then. But my thanks to the city and the department that helped with cleaning off the monument. I can't wait to see it and see if it was fully restored, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Was there someone else that wished to speak, too? I heard. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak on their new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I, I just wanted to acknowledge that on Saturday, several council members were present for the, there was a peaceful march led by the Ministerial Alliance on Saturday morning from City Hall to the police station. And there were close to probably 100 or so, maybe more residents that marched with us. And I think the most powerful piece of that was afterwards, a small group of us got together with Chief Doty, Captain Alcox, Sergeant Mickey and several other members of our police force that had a brief conversation about what changes we can actually implement, given everything that's going on within the country. And I stand with a lot of our other residents in terms of believing that our Hammond Police Department is one of the best in the country. But of course, there are still improvements that we can make, and so we will be announcing steps in terms of how the general public can take part in some of those conversations and interactions moving forward. We're working on identifying exactly what venue those will take place in, but part of that might be reestablishing the Hammond Police Citizens Advisory Committee, which was started quite a few years ago, but has not been as active as it could be. So hopefully, we can get that back going and give residents a way to interact with our police department on a regular basis. The other thing I wanted to note was that over the weekend, there were several deaths within my, within the district and the city as a whole. So I just want to give condolences, of course, to Councilman Rakos and his family, as well as the family of Johnny T. Williams, a longtime our district resident. And just want to give additional prayers and thoughts to everybody who has lost someone given these, all these trying times that we're having. And lastly, I do want to remind people that fireworks, as of right now, are illegal. And I've had several residents reach out to me and state that they have heard them going off in the middle of the night, which can be disturbing for some of our senior residents, some of our veterans, and triggering, of course, for animals, too. So just wanted to call that out and say, to ask residents to please refer to the ordinances based on firework, firework use within our city.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on their new unfinished business? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression.
Mr. President.
Count, or
No.
State your name and address.
I'm taking off my sanitary district hat now and putting on my resident hat. Marty Wilgus, 7119 Higgins Park West Avenue, right behind Morton High School. I, you know, I just want to say I was born and raised in this city. My family's been in this city forever. The Hammond Police Department, in my opinion, along with the Fire Department, are second to none. They were out helping us during the problems that we had with the rain, and I can't thank them enough. And I've had the opportunity to work with them over many years, not only when I was chief of staff for Mayor McDermott when he first got elected, but throughout the years. And I can only say that I know many of them. I don't know all of them, but I know many of them, and they are dedicated to the people of our city. And I'm so happy the fact that, that I know them and I know where their heart is. And, you know, I know that we're in a tough time, and I know that we need to talk and pull out and maybe make changes. But our Hammond Police Department is second to none, and, you know, they've been very good, and I know a lot of them, and I'm happy to be a resident of City Hammond that has a police department like we have.
Thank you. Chris, is there anybody that's got their hand up?
We have two additional participants, but we, if we can just give them a moment to virtually raise their hand now, or they can unmute to speak.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the public expression?
Yeah, Council President, I'd like to say a few words, if that's okay.
I recognize that voice, Mr. Vostie.
Good evening, Council. I had sent a letter, maybe it came, maybe you received it before the meeting, and if not, I hope you would give it some, oh, I had to start my video, sorry, that you would give it some, some read. And I appreciate the comments by Councilman Kowinski from his trip to D.C. and also Councilman Tyler, as well as certainly Mr. Wilgus. Hammond was very fortunate. We had some problems in our, the neighbors, neighboring towns. As we go forward, I think there are good questions to be asked and discussions to be had. I think it can be done in a peaceful manner. It was, I was happy to see on Sunday scores of Hammond residents marching peacefully. And I would hope that the city council would actively participate and take the lead in some transparency and some honest discussions about where we are and where we want to go as a city, because we should take advantage of this opportunity that is brought to us. It is an opportunity to address issues that have been longstanding and will continue to happen as we go forward in the future. And I just wish and ask in my letter that the council take an active role in promoting this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Do you see anybody out there, Chris?
We have one more participant. I'll unmute his mic and we can give him a shot. George, would you like to speak?
Was that a no?
That was a no.
Okay, thank you. With that, public expression is now closed. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by everybody, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have. You guys have a nice week.